Good afternoon. Today is August the sixth, twenty twenty five. Welcome to the Queen Anne's County Board of Ed. Please stand as we recite the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Review of the, do you have the?
Can I make a motion to resume open session?
Yes.
At six oh two P M.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There.
Do you have the script?
We do not. Do we know which numbers they are or can?
One, seven, and eight.
Pursuant to the general provisions, Article three dash three zero five and three dash one zero four, the Board of Education of Queen Anne's County will meet in a closed session to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom the public body has jurisdiction, and any other personnel matter that affects one or more or specific individuals to consult with counsel, to obtain legal advice, and to consult with staff, consultants, or other individuals about pending or potential litigation.
And already met.
Okay. What was it?
You said we'll meet.
Oh.
Thank you. At this time, everybody has reviewed the tonight's agenda. Can I get a motion for approval?
I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
All in favor? Thank you. All in favor? All right. Trying to get going. We're just gonna skip to board involvement. Who would like to start, Ms. Carey?
Sure, it's gonna be brief tonight.
That's all right, it's the summer.
Happy summer. I think all I did was a maid training. I was not able to get on the legislative call, but they sent us all the materials.
I had the pleasure of attending the Seussical musical at Ken Island High School with the, in fact, one of, somebody that had come across on the report is leaving. But they run at the high school with the rising kindergarteners and rising second graders, and then they also had the mean girls as well. But it was an amazing show. It was awesome to see all the little kids learn all their lines and recite it. It was fantastic. So that's pretty much all I got in, in the month of July, but summer, summer, summer.
Go on. Nice school. Very good.
I was able to attend the MSDE Session Four Leadership Training in July, which was very informative. If I wrote anything, if I did anything else, I didn't write it down, and I'm not remembring.
Let's see. I attended the Marilyn Reed's Happy Hour. We talked, they had, there's a program in Montgomery County where they have tutors come in and do tutoring for one hour a week. And there was conversations amongst many of the counties on how we could implement that same type of thing. We talked about that here in Queen Anne's County. So that was it for the month of July, because July was busy. But I'm gonna make two plugs tonight. The first is August is Clear the Shelter Month. And there are, at the Queen Anne's County Animal Shelter off of three oh one, there is a ton of kittens and dogs. There were forty kittens bought in on one day. They were rescued from a house. But anyway, cats, dogs, and a guinea pig. So if you're looking for some fur babies, go check them out. And then the second one is this weekend is the beginning of the county fair. Sunday night is where all the food is. There's judging for cookies, candies, and cakes. I'm a judge on the cake squad. So can't wait to taste what our kids have been cooking up at the four H Club. Thank you.
Well, I guess I'll be the outcast here. It's summer, so I don't have much board involvement. But I do look forward to, actually, I've been talking to a lot of folks in the community recently, and to my surprise, I have a lot of folks telling me their kids are looking forward to being back in school here in a couple of weeks, which was.
Looking forward to that.
Parents too.
Yeah. Yeah, maybe it was the parents speaking more than the kids.
Like three weeks.
I'm sure we all look forward to getting the students back and starting a new school year with our new superintendents, interim superintendents helping us out here this year. And we look forward to a better year, we'll say.
All right.
I'll leave it at that.
There you go. Dr. Kibler, you up?
So I did have the opportunity to attend for our migrant program, Movie Night. Dr. Shrek and Goss was at as well at Suddersville Elementary School. So we were serving hot dogs and chips and things and watching Encanto. One of my sons swears he hates that movie, but secretly can't turn it off when it's on. Have to record this meeting for him later as he grows up. But that was a nice event. And then I must say too, we had an amazing administrators and supervisors leadership retreat the past two days at Chesapeake College and their Higher Education Center. I do want to thank Chesapeake College for allowing us the use of their buildings off-site for free. That's a great place for us all to get together and prepare, welcome our new administrators, and plan for the year. Really excited about welcoming our new teachers next week for orientation, returning teachers and staff the week after, and then our students in just three weeks, like the parents know. So excited.
All right.
All right, we're gonna move into citizen participation and public comment. Just a reminder.
I was gonna say, do we have to approve July's second agenda? Because it's under.
It's in, it was in two.
Did they roll it under?
It was in two places, yeah.
All right.
So.
Good, good.
Yes.
All right, cool. All right, just a reminder, we ask all speakers to keep in mind the following guidelines. Speakers should sign the roster, including their telephone number and address. Comments should be limited to three minutes in length. Comments longer than three minutes should be submitted in writing. Statements to the board should relate to the matter, general policy over which the board has authority. Comments about the actions or statements of individual staff members are not appropriate for public comments and should be referred to the superintendent of schools or school board president. If you have a specific questions, the board will make sure an appropriate staff member responds to your question. The board respects your desire and right to convey your message freely, but asks as a courtesy to this board and our citizens that you show respect for all. Mr. Richard McNeil.
Good evening. Richard McNeil, I'm representing the retirement school personnel group. And it is August, believe it or not, and school's ready to go, not for us. From our group, we'd like to send best wishes to the new staff, the returning staff, the custodians, the maintenance group, and the bus drivers, and everybody else towards a good opening to a school year. And I know from past experience what nervousness and excitement that can be all in one time. So we do that. Also, you know, as I seem to have mentioned before, our group is concerned over the possible reduction in federal monies that are coming to the state, which eventually comes down to the county. And I'm not sure what the impact will be, but I'm sure it'll come out over the next ten to twelve months, and especially as you start looking for the budget for next year. So whatever you all can do to voice your support for that not happening, I would encourage you, and I'm sure you're doing that. I'd like to congratulate Mr. Copey from Queen Anne's High School. Yeah, Clay Shooting Team, he got the national. And if my understanding is right, he got like a ninety-nine point nine out of a hundred. So we need to pat him on the back and bring highlight to Queen Anne's County and to him, and all of that kind of thing. While you all are getting ready for school, our retirement group is having a breakfast on the first day of school. I don't have to go to school to breakfast. And this will be our sixth year. And each year, we've been gaining ten to twelve people, so we're almost taking over Denny's. And fortunately, they're still open, you know, so I don't know where we're gonna be. We'll be at your house for breakfast. And lastly, I'm going to be a judge. I've been a judge out of the fair Sunday evening, so I'll see you out there. This is my twelfth year of judging on that part. And if you've never done it, you're in for a real treat.
I've done candy and cookies. This will be my first time doing cakes.
Oh, well, good, good, good. And thank you. And well, really, for a good start to a good year.
Thank you very much.
See you next month.
Sounds good.
Is there anyone that didn't sign up that would like to speak? All right, go once, go once twice.
Cap got off of him, though. What he, Mr. McNeil said was, we should actually congratulate the entire Clay Shooting Team, because not only did Mr. Copey win national champion, but the entire team did very, very well at the national level. So I want to say congratulations to them as well.
We'll move on to the human resources report. As it was discussed in the closed session, are there any other comments or questions for Dr. Noel? All right, can we get a motion for approval?
I motion to approve the August sixth, twenty twenty five, human resources report as presented.
A second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you very much. And Ms. Smith?
Got here for a little bit. All right, President Bent, Dr. Kibler, board members, members of the executive team. My name is Jolene Smith, and I am the supervisor of Special Education for Queen Anne's County Public Schools. I am here before you tonight to present the Special Education Staffing Plan for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. The Special Education Staffing Plan is required per COMAR as well as MSDE. Its purpose is to really ensure that districts are reviewing the staffing deployment within each district to ensure that students with disabilities are being provided a free and appropriate public education in their least restrictive environment. So this presentation is kind of a summary of the narrative staffing plan that I provided to you with the yellow sheet, and it is up for approval this evening. So as you know, Queen Anne's County is comprised of about seven, seventy-five hundred students. There are actually eight hundred and eighty-two students with disabilities in the district. Each school is represented on the slide with the total school enrollment as well as the enrollment of students with disabilities. In the parentheses, you will see the percentage of students with disabilities compared to the total enrollment. You'll notice that some of the schools have, are highlighted, or they're outlined in an orange square. Those schools do house regional programs, one or two. And I think it goes without saying that those regional programs do impact the percentage that you see in the parentheses there, because those percentages are based on the service school as opposed to the residence school. So it does kind of skew the numbers just a little bit. So we do provide services to children, birth through twenty-one. They start receiving services through our Infants and Toddlers Program for those that qualify. And they can continue to receive services all the way up to, through the age of twenty-one. And we do have our partnership with Chesapeake College, where we offer our PATH program for our students that are eighteen to twenty-one. So we provide those services in a service delivery continuum that you see on the screen before you. Generally, always kind of starting at that least restrictive side, moving up to the, to the more restrictive side. And we really provide services through inclusive opportunities on the left, going up towards the more restrictive side to include our self-contained regional programs. There are instances where our students require more restrictive settings, such as a non-public placement or a residential placement. But we only consider those more restrictive settings when a less restrictive setting is not appropriate, as determined by the IDP team. You'll see that it is a continuum, and it's not just single pla, sorry. You'll see that it's a continuum and not just single places on that arrow. And that's because we find that most of our students don't, don't perform best in just one setting, but really, it takes a myriad of different settings so that we can really kind of tailor their instruction and capitalize on their abilities and provide those opportunities in a less restrictive setting. Finally, our related services are delivered through a partnership with the Midshore Special Education Consortium. So they afford us the opportunity to provide things like occupational therapy, physical therapy, audiological services, teachers for the visually impaired as well as the hearing impaired. On page eleven in the staffing plan, there is additional information on monitoring and evaluation. So as a child's journey begins, like I said, they may start in our Infants and Toddlers Program. This slide captures the number of children receiving services from July through June thirtieth of last year. And you'll see that the number is a hundred and seventy-six. That is an increase from last year, where we served children, a hundred and fifty-eight children. You'll see that most of the students that are, I'm sorry, the children that are receiving services are between the ages of two and three. At the age of three, families are afforded the opportunity, if they continue to qualify, to stay with the Infants and Toddlers Program through an IFSP or an Individualized Family Service Plan. Or they could transition to school-age services and receive services through an IEP or an Individualized Education Program. If they are age three and they decide to go to the school-age platform, then they could participate if they qualify for our preschool program, which is for students ages three, where students with disabilities are participating alongside peer models in a very language-rich environment. You'll see that this particular slide demonstrates the least restrictive environment for children ages three to five and the environments where they receive services. As I mentioned, once they begin their journey through the school-age population, they are then receiving services on an IEP. And this slide is just kind of a different presentation of the schools that I presented earlier. You have the total school enrollment alongside the total special education enrollment. It is important to note, though, that students with disabilities are general education students first. So they're represented in both graphs on the slide, the total school enrollment as well as the total special education enrollment.
Can you say that one more time?
Mm-hmm.
What did you?
So students with disabilities are general education students first. So they're captured in that total school enrollment.
Okay.
And they are also captured in the total special education.
Gotcha.
This slide demonstrates kind of a historical view of census by disability code so that you can see kind of a historical view of where most of our students have fallen within the disability codes as identified in IEP meetings by the IEP team. You'll see that historically speaking, our, most of our students fall in that specific learning disability category, followed closely by other health impairment, and then followed behind that by speech-language impairment. We are seeing a decline in our specific learning disability category, and, and you'll see it's kind of parsed out in other areas. But, you know, it is good to see kind of a decline in that, in that specific learning disability category and to see it kind of more equitably distributed in other areas. One of the things that we're very proud of, proud of and continue to really kind of applaud our teams on is our inclusive nature here in Queen Anne's. So we continue to exceed the state target this year. We exceeded it by ten percent in terms of our students participating in the general education setting, eighty percent of the day or more. We really, we have seen a decrease in that number over time, but we kind of attribute that to the fact that we are seeing students with more complex needs, and our teachers take advantage of kind of those pull-out opportunities to be, to be sure that they are providing the students with what they need. However, that being said, it's important to note that they capitalize on any inclusive opportunities whenever they can, even for our students with the most complex needs. You know, we're always really fighting to find ways and to include them as much as we can. So that being said, this, this slide kind of highlights some of the data points from last year, some of the highlights. One of the things that I'm most excited to report, again, going from inclusion, you know, last year was our very first year of having best buddies at both of our high schools. We've always had a strong presence with our unified sports teams, but this really kind of took it to the next level. It was really exciting to see like kids doing Rochambeau in the, in the hallways. And, you know, everyone just walked up to everyone else. There was no difference between the students. So it was, it was really exciting to see last year. We're also looking to expand the Regional ACE Program this year to include a K to two classroom. So we will now have the opportunity to have a K to two classroom as well as middle school classrooms for that program. Another thing that we're really excited about, and, you know, I think our staff are to be applauded for, annually, we are kind of scored or graded on our SPP APR report card. And this past year, both our Part C and Part B programs met requirements and were found to be in the universal tier, which is the highest one that you can be in, with notes of, of strong compliance, inclusion, and excellent family support. So I think it's just a testament to the staff and what they do on a daily basis, you know, and, and their willingness to kind of collaborate with families to really meet the needs of our students. Not that that's new, we've been in those tiers for a long time, but, you know, I still think it's, it's worthy of applause. On page two, in Appendix A, there is evidence of public input in the staffing plan. We do encourage public input, and some of the ways that we do that is through public comment at board meetings, participation in the Special Education Citizens Advisory Council meetings, or just attendance at some of our different family support events and whatnot. We are required annually to demonstrate maintenance of effort, and I'm proud to say that we continue to be able to do that for FY twenty-six. And again, I think that that's a testament to Queen Anne's County and its kind of dedication to this, this population, and really making sure that all of our students are, are really succeeding and have what they need to do so. So staffing patterns, like I mentioned before, are examined annually. We look at things such as kind of student census, enrollment numbers. We look at teachers, how many we have, support staff, et cetera. And we analyze that information to determine deployment across the different schools. So this is kind of a breakdown of the staffing structure for FY twenty-six. It's not drastically different from last year. This one does break it down in terms of the total kind of allotment compared to the local contribution, because this is representative, representative of both grant and local funds. So this is kind of the staffing structure, keeping all of those in mind. And this is broken down even farther in the narrative that you were provided. So what we're proposing for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year is forty-eight special educators, nine IEP chairpersons, ten PACS special educators, three preschool, three peels, and three ACE special educators. And again, we really do take into consideration caseload sizes. We take into consideration related service needs as well as kind of the frequency and dosage needs of different students when we are deploying staff to the different. And then finally, this is a breakdown of the related services. Like I mentioned before, these are provided to the students of Queen Anne's County through both Queen Anne's County and the Midshore Special Education Consortium. So this is kind of a breakdown of how those positions are funded and the allocations that we receive through the consortium. Questions about the staffing plan?
So your list on page, what page is this? The special staffing enrollment allocations? Where you have your eight, your teachers listed out?
Yep.
How does that map to what was on the chart before? I mean, what's the change?
So you'll see, so for example, where it says forty-eight, there were ten IEP chairpersons, and now there are nine to make up the difference for the three ACE positions. So what we did is, is we looked in a model that we used last year up in North County, and that model worked, where we shared an IEP chair across two smaller schools. So we kind of took that and capitalized on that, and we did the same thing in another school, where we felt that the population would warrant that. Now, that being said, we have to consider that every year. So if that population were to go up, we would have to reconsider whether or not that model continues from year to year. But that's kind of where you see those fluctuations. It's not so much in the buildings themselves. And to kind of give you an example of that, like Mata Peak Middle, for example, did see a reduction in their overall enrollment of students with disabilities. But you have to account for the frequency and dosage, dosage of the services being delivered. So you have to be able to essentially cover the spread. And, and you have to do that within the master schedule. So even though their numbers went down, they really only lost kind of half a position, which is that shared IEP chair position.
Any other questions?
Nope.
We have a recommendation for approval? Can I get a motion?
I motion for the Queen Anne's County Board of Education to approve the Special Education Staffing Plan as presented.
A second.
All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'm gonna stay here and I'm just gonna go through these contracts as well. So this is, again, part of the staffing plan. All of these are budgeted, they're not in addition to, it's to meet the needs of positions that we need to, to cover. The first contract that I bring before you this evening is a contract for Williams Organization, which is Occupational Therapy Services, in the amounts of $101,175. This is for one occupational therapy provider who provides services to really kind of the South County schools. So because Queen Anne's County is proportionally larger than the other districts with which we partner with the Midshore Special Education Consortium, in order for it to be equitable, we have to consider that differential. So we do carry one occupational therapist, therapist in addition to our consortium contribution that the others do not carry. So that's what this is.
Any questions?
Make a motion for the Queen Anne's County Board of Education to approve a contract with Williams Organization LLC, fiscal impact $101,175, budget source FY26, restricted and unrestricted operating budget.
I second that.
All in favor? Aye.
The next contract I bring before you is for Chesapeake Speech. This is for two speech providers in the amount of $156,840. This provides a four days of speech service to Stevensville Middle School and Ken Island High School, and it also provides part-time speech therapy services to the Infants and Toddlers Program. This is funded through local, through restricted and unrestricted funds, and again, this is a budgeted item.
Other question. So when we look at these two individuals that are going to multiple schools, is there a cost analysis on how much it would cost us compared to paying contractual services?
There is, and unfortunately, there's just not enough people out there. So the reason we have to go the route of contractual services is because it's very hard to find speech, language pathologists, occupational therapists, physical therapists. They're very hard to find on the shore. So unfortunately, there's not enough of them to fill all the needs.
So we're going through a contracting company. Are they coming from across the bridge, other counties? Are they traveling far to be here? My question is, if they're taking a job there, if we had a full-time gig at our school district, how, I guess I'm kind of confused on.
Some of them, so to answer, it's a two-pronged question. So yeah, some of them are travelers, and so they do come from far away and they reside here, or they provide virtual services. We're very lucky that most of our services are provided in person. This particular speech pathology company is a local company, and to your point, yes, there are a limited number of FTEs available, to which then we do have to look outside of those FTEs. We look at the budget each year, but because those services fluctuate the way that they do, we can't always guarantee that we're gonna need them long-term, so we have to account for that.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? We have a recommendation for approval?
I motion for the Queen Anne's County Board of Education to approve the contract with Chesapeake Speech, fiscal impact $156,840, budget source FY26, restricted and unrestricted operating budget.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
This next contract is through PDS, or Pediatric Development Services. This is also for a speech-language pathologist to cover services at Kennard Elementary School and Sudlersville Middle School in the amount of $126,350. Again, coming from unrestricted funds in this particular case, and again, this is just because we didn't have, we don't have the ability to provide the services currently with a hired individual.
No questions? All right.
I make a motion for the Queen Anne's County Board of Education to approve the contract with Pediatric Development Services, fiscal impact $126,350, budget source FY26, unrestricted operating budget.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Last one. This last one is for a school psychologist from Sulliant. This is to cover a school psychologist physician. It's a vacancy, an FMLA vacancy, so we have to cover the services in their absence in the amount of $52,500. And it is a contract through August through November, so it is a, a limited contract.
No questions?
In November, so obviously in November, there'll be another contract for another.
No, that's when our actual FTE will return. Unfortunately, it's one of those that, kind of like getting a substitute teacher, but there aren't substitute psychologists out there for us.
Do we already have those, what are they called, the Vocovision things? Cause they only provide one, it says.
Yes, we don't have to.
We don't have to pay for them?
Right.
Okay.
That, that's all part of it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I thought it said it just provided one.
But we can also utilize other platforms.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
I make a motion for the Queen Anne's County Board of Education to approve the contract with Sulliant, fiscal impact $52,500, budget source FY26, unrestricted operating budget.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very much.
Thank you.
Thanks. Have a good evening.
You too. Um, let's see, who's up next? Dr. Kibler.
So Ms. Hickey couldn't be here tonight, so I volunteered to step in to bring the ice cream contract. I think, I forget, I think we did, was it Cisco last month? I, I forget now off the top of my head. I told you that would be the only food one for the year. Well, in the meantime, Anarondo County, who we were under this contract with for this year, they're, for whatever reason, I don't know the terms, but they're not, their contract with Hershey's that we were piggybacking off of, we're not following, or they're getting out of. So Prince George's County does have a Hershey's ice cream contract, we're piggybacking off of there. You can see the, the letter where we're allowed to do that, we're authorized to do it. Mr. Watkins and I kind of talked about this, just want to let the board know, while we are saying this is budgeted, this, we, we will put, extend the money first to put the ice cream in the schools, but the students, when they go through the line, they're essentially paying for this as well. But because it is a $50,000 contract, we did want to bring it to you just to let you know what we're doing. And I do want to say two things, just to put a plug in for our food service program. They had their first unannounced visit by MSDE last week since we've gone self-op, and they were reviewing three of our summer meal sites, and we were found to be in compliance with no corrective action, no disallowed meals. So that's very exciting, because that was our first unannounced view since we went self-op a year, a year ago, so we're proud of that. And then we've also received monies from the No Kid Hungry Grant. They came to visit on Monday and just see the, like, the van, see our sites, and just see how the money has been spent, and they were really happy with their visit while they were here as well.
That's great.
Put those plugs in while we were talking food service.
Talking about ice cream.
Very excited about that.
Do we make $50,000 in ice cream sales a year?
I would have to go back and default to Mr. Watkins to look at the ice cream line. And this, this is actually also, like, it could be up to 50, so I, I don't know what the.
They provide me free samples?
I was gonna say, we can't, we can't vote without free samples.
Do they do quality control? Cause I'm sure the board can provide.
Quality control.
Yes.
I think Ms. Hickey answered this before. I think she said we essentially break even with this, right?
Yes.
Okay.
We're not making a profit on our kids.
Well, and our food, I mean, that's the goal of food service in general, too.
Break even. That's right. All right, can we get a motion for approval before this gets out of hand?
I motion for the board to approve the request to piggyback off Prince George's County Public Schools contract with Hershey Creamery Company for ice cream and ice cream freezers. Bid number RFP 015-21 dated September 10th, 21, 2021 for the 2025-26 school year, fiscal impact $50,000, budget source Food Service Fund balance.
I second that.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you very much. Ms. Passan?
Expect samples next meeting?
A race?
I wish I could always follow an ice cream. To bring celebrity to literacy, grant funding, and my asks. That was fun, so I'm glad you, that, that item slid in.
I like filling in all that one.
Yeah, you can do that anytime. Good evening, President Bent, members of the board, Dr. Kibler, members of the executive team. For the record, my name is Bridgette Passan. I'm the English Language Arts Supervisor for grades three through 12. I brought my counterpart with me tonight.
I'm Angela Gevert. Good evening. I am the Supervisor of Instruction for Early Childhood and RELA for pre-K to 2.
So we're bringing you two items tonight, both from a competitive literacy grant that we spent a lot of the spring writing, and then in early June, we were given our allocation. I tell this story because I think it's important, but it was Friday night at 9:00 on June 6th. I, you know, happened to be scrolling the things women my age scroll, like, am I getting enough macros, what's my protein for the day, et cetera? And my Eastern Shore ELA supervisor's text chain starts popping up that our grant awards are in. So these are the kind of text conversations I have on a Friday night. We were really lucky in that we got everything we asked for for pre-K through fifth grade. Other districts on the shore were not as lucky. Some districts didn't get anything, and many of our counterparts got their elementary asks but didn't get their secondary asks. We had a big secondary ask that we were trying to get IXL for Queen Anne's County High School so that we could be in lockstep with Ken Island, and we were denied that. So that is too bad. We have a bit of a contingency plan, a free contingency plan for Queen Anne's, but I'm bringing two items tonight that we were approved for, for our elementary kits. So the first one is Amplify, M-Class. It's a pretty extensive amount with the overall cost being $165,000 and $165,338. This is for materials that will help progress monitor our students in Tier Two and Tier Three instructional services. It will also provide PD to teachers, our reading specialists, our ML teachers, and special educators in using these resources for all of our striving readers. Amplify did want the money, all the money upfront, and I knew, having written literacy grants before with the state, that if I got $165,000 plus from year one of the grant, I wasn't gonna get any other activities for our elementary teachers and kids approved. So I worked with Amplify to break up this four-year contract over the course of three years. So we got it. So the, I had to write an application, and we asked for 50% this first year, 25% year two, 25% year three. I also, with grant dollars making me very nervous, I, and, and this grant spanning three years, I did ask for, I think, Mr. Constance, you might correct me on this, I asked for like an indemnity clause or like some clause that would keep us safe if grant money wasn't given to us for years two, three, and four. So they put a rider at the end of every quote that indicates that we would not be obligated to pay for that year if, if the state did not release the grant dollars. So we brought that in to protect us all as well. So I say all that to say, I'm here tonight to ask you to approve the cost for year one, which the total cost for PD and materials for our K-5 teachers and students is $83,746.60.
Eighty-three or eighty-six?
Yes.
Eighty-six.
Okay.
No questions?
No question. Is this a new program that you're using? Yeah, okay.
Yes.
And so is it just support materials? It's not, like, so we have iReady, right? And that?
So iReady is a universal screener for all our kids.
Okay.
What this will do is progress monitor our students receiving reading interventions.
Okay.
So we can tell how they're progressing, see when and if we need to pivot, and which way we need to take them in the intervention.
So this is a whole new extra thing for?
Progress monitoring will happen every four to six weeks. Our iReady screener happens only three times a year. So this will give us more timely, accurate information on, on, on all of our striving readers.
Sounds good. Good job.
We're excited.
Is the program pretty user-friendly for the teachers and the instructors to be able to use it, not a large learning curve? Cause we know they're already swamped with students and such, which is trying to, we're asking them to do another thing, which is good, it's gonna help, but.
So I asked for volunteers for teachers, so I didn't, I didn't, I'm not making any teacher do this. We are having our reading specialist and, and special educators that Ms. Smith provided. I asked for volunteers from our ML teachers and our general educators. And so I have several people from each school, ton of teachers from Centerville Elementary, who are excited to come to training. They're actually coming to training on August 21st. So it was a volunteer basis. Knowing our teachers, it's electronic, giving this will not be a huge shift for them. They used to give running records, IRIs, and this is kind of the 2025 new, new version of, of monitoring, monitoring our needy readers.
And does the program, as you get into year two, three, and four, do they continue to provide a continuing education if they made different changes to program, to the, the interface?
Yes.
Does the company still provide that, that training for?
Yes, that they would come out and support us. Yes.
I have a question. You said it's volunteer-based to get, come and do the training?
Mm-hmm.
Are you getting a lot of people? I know you just mentioned a couple. Okay, good.
Yes, I filled, we had 30 spots to fill, and, and I filled all, all 30 of them.
You have more? Like, in other words, obviously?
I can't have any more than 30.
Okay.
Um, it's all we could afford in, in year one.
Yeah, yeah.
But as the program evolves, as new grants come out, maybe as, when we get back to a better place with our local dollars, you will see, because Angela and I will both bring you a comprehensive literacy policy that we have to write over the course of next year so that we're in alignment with the state's comprehensive literacy policy and the, and the funding, we're at the local funding, we're even gonna have to look at on spending on making sure that our kids are being met with the latest technology resources, teachers with PD. It's gonna be a pretty important discussion that, that we all have.
Okay.
So I, I will always look to write it and, and get them, get them PD.
And will the data that comes from this, will this supplement what we're already doing in terms of reading literacy and testing and getting data? Okay.
This is gonna make, make it even, even more, so that we're tracking our kids on a better basis on, on this, what we've developed a cadence.
And is this just an assessment, or is this an assessment and tools to help them read better?
Yes, so it's a six-minute assessment.
Okay.
That will track where they are, and listen, if you're seven years old, that's about all you can do.
Yeah.
And not, not deal with a teacher. And then what the license with M-Class does is it immediately maps out 10 lessons for them that a special educator or reading specialist, anybody who can get to them during their flex block, can deliver those 10 lessons over 10 instructional days.
Okay.
And then we assess them again. Yep.
Great questions.
I just want to thank Ms. Passan and Ms. Gevert, too, for not only the grant funds and, and this, but just thinking about spreading the, the grant monies out.
Absolutely.
And as well as putting that clause in there to protect the board, hopefully that the board is recognizing kind of what the team is, the CNI team, and, you know, Ms. Passan here tonight, just, it's, it's great thinking and getting us a financial foothold to be strong moving forward. I really appreciate the work.
Very appreciated.
And I'm glad you brought up teachers. I did, I surveyed all three through fifth grade teachers. I let them know my plans, our immediate needs, and then said, what else do you need? Only four of them answered, and that's okay. It was the same answer among all four of them, and what they asked for had a price tag to it, and, and Dr. Kibler and I are looking at the Title II grant to, to help with that ask. So I remember responding to one of the teachers, you know, you're reading my mind, this is a bigger ask than what we're gonna get in the grant, and, and I'm looking at it in FY26 for Title II. So we got, we got some, some great feedback there, and, and we're just doing great work with literacy. We're excited to keep going.
That's good. Thank you.
I motion for the Queen Anne's County Board of Education to approve the purchase of a progress monitoring tool, intensive intervention resources, and professional development from Amplify in order to support the literacy development of striving readers. The fiscal impact $86,746.60, budget source is the Comprehensive Literacy State Development Grant.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. One more item, this has been a teacher ask as well, and with the turnaround of the grant, I wanted to get them vocal text, chapter books. My initial experiences as a high school teacher, when I was assigned three through five, I always wondered why kids weren't starting chapter books until they got to sixth grade. So we now have an opportunity to buy whole class sets of chapter books, starting at the, at the third grade level. We are purchasing the books that were already adopted into our into reading curriculum. So each classroom already has six copies of this book. We're gonna get, we're asking to get whole group sets so that it can be more of a communal whole group read and build community in, in the school. Our reading specialists have developed professional development to support the implementation of, of all these texts, because it will be new for, for our elementary teachers. This will be a one-time cost, so if this is approved, I just, we just put in these recs tomorrow. So if this is approved, I just, we just put in these recs tomorrow and we're able to buy them and start getting them to our schools in the, in the next three weeks. So I am asking for, for this activity, a total cost of $60,769.92.
All right, I motion for the Queen Anne's County Board of Education to approve the purchase of vocal texts from Who in Milflyn Parki, H M E H, to support, uh, lost my spot. The literacy development of all readers. Fiscal impact is $60,769.92. Funding source is Comprehensive Literacy Development Grant, State Development Grant.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Enjoy the rest of your summer.
Thank you.
New bus purchase, Mr. Murdock. You should charge him double when you get, when he gets back.
He's all right. Well deserved. Good evening, President Bent, Dr. Kibler, board members, executive team. For the record, my name is John Murdock. I'm here tonight for the purchase of two Thomas Safety Liner, 2026 Safety Liner C2 buses. The purchase will be from American Bus Sales in Annapolis. The purchase of two Safety Liners utilizing the Sourcewell contract with the fiscal impact of $324,120,000. With the local FY26 capital improvement plan. And that's to replace two of our 81 and 82 11 that are going out, having met their 15-year life. That we're asking for approval for the purchase of those two from American Bus.
This is an annual rotation, like?
So they've met their 15-year life, yet we, and we've kinda tried to set it up where we're doing it more even. We have a couple of years coming up here where we're gonna lose heavy. And we've tried to stretch it out so it's more budget-friendly over a 15-year lifespan, so. But we have two going out this year, so we definitely have to have those two come back.
Any questions?
I have buses.
Have buses.
I make a motion for the board to approve the contract with American Bus Sales and Services to purchase two 2026 Thomas Safety Liner C2 buses. The fiscal impact is $324,120.00. Budget source FY26 local CIP funds.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm gonna hang tight for the next couple. We're also, this year's budget to, to keep that budget-friendly span over 15 years, we were gonna purchase a third bus. And we can get a deal on two 12-passenger Sprinter vans. But in 2021, House Bill, there was a bill passed that allowed us to transport students in, in smaller vehicles, other than traditional school buses for the benefit of educational needs of students, pre-K age students, students with disabilities, homeless youth, children in foster care. There's a whole list of, of students that qualify for this transportation. And since we can get two of the vans for the price of one bus, we figured that was a, a good deal for the county. And especially with Air County placements that would definitely help with maintenance and costs and everything else. So I think it's a win-win all the way around for us. So again, it would be from American Bus Sales, the government discount program with fiscal, fiscal impact, contract of $123,180. Funding source, local FY26 capital improvement plan.
I do have one question. How will these be, will these be wrapped? So that they are, so when I drive over a bridge and I do it all the time, there's tons of these types of vehicles on the other side. And they just have, it looks like the magnet placards on the side that says, "School Bus" or "Students" inside or whatever. How are these going to be wrapped?
So we don't, they're, they're gonna come white, the two that we've looked at. And American Bus will probably put the Queen Anne County sticker down the side of them like we do on our buses.
Okay.
So Queen Anne's County Public Schools. And it'd just be the, the wording like we have on our current buses.
These probably won't have the stop signs and the?
No. No, they're not a school bus. So the student warning light system is for a school bus.
Hopefully, okay.
Yep. And, and these have other regulations and stipulations. So we, we can't use them like we would use as for a school bus. I can't put them on a route with 15 kids or anything like that. I have to use them pretty much one-on-one, go on Baltimore or something like that, so.
For a non-public placement transports and things navigating the city streets.
Or, you know, on a homeless route.
Right.
You know, for, so, yep.
So these buses, they won't be stopped, like, they're going in parking lots, somebody's driveway. They're not gonna be stopping like out in the road, so picking up kids off, okay.
Yep.
Are there rules related to these buses, like there are for the other ones, like the 15-year?
So they, they are. They are, they're a little more loose here in Queen Anne's County. We're still gonna stick, we're gonna treat them like a school bus.
Okay.
You know, so I'm still gonna have, yeah, at this point, we're still gonna keep the drivers trained the same and, and everything else, so.
Another question? I recommend, make a motion that the board approve the contracts with American Bus Sales and Services to purchase two 2024 MV Sprinter 12-passenger vans. Fiscal impact, $123,180.00. Budget source FY26 local CIP funds.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the next four, they're, they're all the same contracts. So we'll, we'll go ahead and run all four of them together. And if you have questions, we can take them as, as they come. So the four LLCs that we contract are General Ed bussing with the, the new next three-year contract. So it would begin August 26, 2025 until June 30, 2028. The hourly rate this year will be $29.16 with a mileage rate of $1.84 and a PVA of $29,000. The $1,200 administrative fee for each route. And then the second and third year will be adjusted by the CPIU from the Baltimore Columbia Towson Report for the region. And we'll use the December figure for the consecutive year. And then again, for the third consecutive year. And it will adjust no less than 4%, no greater than 8%, no matter what the CPIU change. And the budget source for this would be FY26 operating budget. And it's Bayside Area Transportation, LNS Services Incorporated, Northern County Exchange LLC, and Queen Anne's County Bus Line LLC are the four LLCs. Looking to renew their contract for the next three years.
Is that what we normally do per year? All four companies? Is that, yeah.
Any questions?
So they charge us an hourly rate plus a mileage rate and a minimum mileage and hourly rate per route?
Yes.
Plus an administration fee for the route?
And, and a PVA for the bus, so, yep. And that's changes with the year to bus. So you have buses on the road that are still running with an older PVA. Any new bus this year would, would be getting the $29,000 annual PVA.
I think I asked this before, but have we looked into the aspect of doing the buses within the county? Or is that not feasible? I think I remember asking that before, but.
We did both.
We did, correct.
We have some county buses that are.
What I'm talking about, the entire bus route? Yeah, the entire fleet. How, how cost conducive or is that a possibility? Or how is that?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure the last time a full analysis has been done on.
I was gonna say, it's been quite a while since, since anything like that's been, analysis has been done to take that kind of undertaking.
In general, the bus fleet that, that we operate is for our special education.
Right.
Transportation.
And most of the general rate is run by contractors.
I'm just asking, because we see the, the price and all the extra costs. Would it be cost, would it be conducive for us to look into that? Or is that an issue with hiring folks and being staff? Like, that, that's a question I'm just trying to look at and.
It's like anything, there's gonna be costs involved. You know, it's a.
Can we get a general, I'm not saying dive deep into it and get a full analysis, but a general idea where, where that cost analysis?
I wouldn't even know what, what a contract would bid to, to cover Air County. Couldn't even give you an idea of what that would cost.
Well, I guess, I guess the question posed is what we would have, we would have to do is start looking at what it would cost to add to our fleet of buses to cover all routes. So that's what we would have to start doing. So we would need to spend the next probably two years of this contract, which is certainly something.
Yeah, that's why I said, not like a deep dive now, but like over time, start getting a general idea. Because when this three-year contract comes up, what if we're saving $100,000 a year or something like that? Doing that, or it's break even and it's easier to hire a contractor? I, I don't know. That's why I'm asking the question. But if we could save substantial money, that's more, more teachers, more staff, more, more something else that we have. It, it might be a little more undertaking because we're not new to contracting, but.
We could probably reach out to some districts that, as a starting point, that, that do that. I, I don't know how many of them there are. There are not many, I don't think, but we could start there and try to get some ideas. But that will take time.
Right, right. I know, it's not a quick process. I'm just.
But it's something we could do.
Just throwing the idea out there that it could be a possibility to just save.
Get something put together.
Especially if we're looking at funding being pulled from certain places and areas from the, the federal government and such like that. We, we gotta start, try to plan ahead now for what could happen. You know, plan for the worst, hope for the best.
Any other questions? At this point, when we approve these, can we do all four?
I make a motion for the board to approve the contract with Bay Area Transportation LLC, LNS Bus Services Incorporated, Northern County Exchange LLC, and Queen Anne's County Bus Lines to transport Queen Anne's County Public School students from August 6, 2025 until January 30, 2028.
June.
Oh, June, sorry, June 30, 2020. For the agreement, budget source FY26 operating budget.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
We do have two representatives or contractors in the audience tonight.
Excuse me, sir. There's our, missing your signature. Daryl, you're reading my mind.
Good evening, President Bent, Vice President Capes, board members, executive team, President Superintendent Kibler. For the record, my name is Daryl Baraklo. I am the Supervisor of Facilities and Design. I come before you this evening seeking contract approval for the replacement of the four failing tennis courts at Ken Island High School. The existing tennis courts have severe cracks in the asphalt base that require the full replacement of the asphalt, including fencing all the way down to the existing granular subbase. The project's scope will be the full removal and replacement of the four existing tennis courts, including nets, perimeter fencing, and, and restoration of all of that work. Crack remediation was originally planned for the repair. You might remember when we did the local CIP, we had a budget line item for the tennis courts. That was for crack remediation. We had the contractor come out and look at it. Crack remediation was done approximately seven years ago, and that has since failed. So the remediation was not possible and it required a full replacement. That was why when we presented the revised local CIP, that number increased pretty much double to around $380,000 funding-wise. So with that, we, we were requested by Queen Anne's County, the government, to contact their preferred contractor, which is American Tennis Courts, to provide a sole-source contract for the replacement of the courts. They utilize American Tennis Courts for all their own court work. And as a, as a matter of fact, American Tennis Courts was the contractor who did the restoration of the track at both Ken Island High School and then two summers ago at Queen Anne's County High School. So they, they, they do have a longstanding record of work with us as well as, as the county. And it does provide continuity for them from a warranty and, and service on their courts. So with all of that said, we did get a, get a price from them for $310,458.25 to replace the courts. And then they do have an allowance, a contingency allowance for $62,625 for soil cement. And that's in case the sub, the granular subbase, if it is found to be inadequate to support the, the courts, they will go ahead and do a installation of soil cement, which will improve that subgrade and get it where it needs to be for a total contract amount of $373,083.25. And the source of funding is local FY26 CIP funding. Any questions?
When it comes to the soil cement, the subbase, like, do they, it's probably a silly question, but do they show proof, like, that it's warranted? Like, are you there? Like, is somebody there?
Yeah, what we'll do is, is you, you really can't tell whether it's needed or not until the, the asphalt is removed. And then they'll come in and they'll proof-roll it. We'll, we'll make sure that it's not pumping. We'll make sure that it's gonna support what's there. If it does exhibit signs of failure from extreme moisture, that's really the, the problem with it is, is that once that asphalt cracks and then moisture gets into that subgrade, and then it starts freezing and thawing, it just, it, it starts to deteriorate that, that base. So the, the soil cement is basically exactly what it sounds like. They mix soil and then they, they, they basically chill it into that granular base. And then it firms everything up and then they pour the, or they place the asphalt then on top of that. So we'll, we will definitely have people on site. If, I, I will be on site.
Sure.
These are original, correct, to the?
They are the, well, they are the original courts that were there. And there have been, there has been remediation done to it, yes.
Okay, and then is this include any kind of warranty for these courts?
Yes, it will have a one-year warranty after, after the, after the installation. It will have a one-year warranty. And then with, like with all the other work, ATC, they've, American Tennis Courts, they've been on, they, they've been around for 35 years, they're not going anywhere. So them to come back out and do restorative work. For example, at Ken Island High School, we had some issues on their, on their track that was outside the one-year warranty. But since they were coming back out to do work at Queen Anne's County, they were able to quickly just go over there and kinda do the, do the repair. So it's, it is, there, there is a lot of benefits with maintaining that same contractual relationship.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Yeah?
Any other questions?
Make a motion for the board to approve the award of a construction contract for replacement of the courts, plus the soil cement allowance to ATC of Baltimore, Maryland, to remove and replace the four tennis courts at Ken Island High School. Fiscal impact, $373,083.25. Funding source FY26 local CIP funds.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Money time.
These all numbers start to form together after.
Oh, I know.
You're so much money.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Rob Watkins. I'm serving as the Supervisor of Finance. And I'm here today to present to, ask for a transfer of funds within the fiscal year '25 budget. Each year, as we go through the, the previous year closeout, we have to make sure that each of the dollar amounts that are, that are in each of the categories are balanced. And they're in, in this case, we have three categories that are not balanced. We overspent on three categories during the fiscal, during previous fiscal year '25. And those are in category six, in special education. We overspent in category eight, health and services, and in category 10, operations. So I'm asking your permission to move funds from category three, the salary, salary line, to the tune of $40,140.81 to support the need in category six. Requesting a transfer from Student Services of $27,000, category seven, to category eight to support Health Services. And then I'm requesting two transfers to support operations. Seventy-two thousand, five hundred dollars from Transportation and $530,000 from fixed charges to operations to support those budgets.
I want to point out that much of what we are doing here is formalizing the, the actions we took last summer for where we were at with our budget going into the year when we knew. Hate to bring it up again, but the. going into the year when we knew, I hate to bring it up again, but the furlough days and the other mitigating things we needed to do to balance our budget. So now this is just kind of formalizing some of that stuff we did.
We're about ready to go through the financial statement audit. And one of the tasks is to see if we can get the budget straight before they start the financial statement audit. And if I've, if, if we've estimated correctly, um, operations is, operations isn't in that much of a deficit. Their, their deficit was about $360,000. Um, so we, but we, our spending still continues out of fiscal year 25 and the bulk of the spending comes out of operations. Operations is going to be where your electricity and your heating bills and some of your communications are coming from. So we're still getting and fielding bills from that, from that category. So there's a little bit of extra going in there to cover the additional costs that we're expecting.
And I guess we should say, point out two other things. There will always be, I shouldn't say always. There will most likely be budget amendments at the end of the year as we look to balance the budget and, and go into our audit. It is also the intent of Mr. Watkins and myself that we would do these amendments throughout the course of the school year as they come up when we need to do it and that they should not be always weighted to the, to the end of the year. We should be doing them throughout. I think we know some of the things we went through last year and that's why we're in the position right now. But that should not be the practice moving forward.
Absolutely.
And we're taking into account some of these higher costs and making sure that we are.
Yes. So we, we, that is correct. So in the current fiscal year budget, we do make adjustments, uh, through the budget process that you guys approved in June to kind of try to cover some of the costs that we were, that we overspent on. Some of them, some of them are, were just, some of them are unpredictable. Um, for instance, in category six, the $40,000 that we need is covering an additional non-public placement that was not predicted before the budget process was done. So we have to cover that cost. There was a lot of other costs inside of special ed that contributed to support, to offset the cost. We just needed to move $40,000 to support that. I can go through more examples for each of the categories if you would like.
I mean, I kind of like to point out just the work that we're doing as a team and, and together, just to get us on the, the right financial foothold moving forward. So if you look at like the category seven example, we had a vacancy, we had two positions in, in, for one classification. Uh, we had a vacancy that happened over the summer last year. We just, we knew where we were budget-wise. We decided to hold that position for the year. What we did then going into the FY26 budget is decided to fold that second position altogether, realize the savings. But for the second position, we did go from 10 months to 12 months, recognizing that the work was still there. Um, so these are just some of the things we're trying to do that, you know, we made some adjustments in 25, carry them forward into 26 to make sure that we are being responsible with the funds and, and getting us on the right path.
We are constantly analyzing our budget. That is one of the practices that we're putting in place. So I'm asking for approval of the budget transfer. So because we are transferring out, uh, within, uh, categories, uh, I'm also asking for approval to send, uh, a letter on behalf of Dr. Kibler to the county commissioner's office, uh, letting them know that we are moving money within new categories.
Questions?
No questions.
Uh, make a motion that board approve the budget transfer request.
I second that.
Oh, perfect.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let's see where we are. So, does anybody want to take a break? I'm just kidding. Let's keep going. Staffing plan, Mr. Guido.
Good evening, President Bent, Dr. Kibler, members of the board, members of the exec team. My name is Darren Guido, supervisor of instruction, for, um, social studies, world languages, service learning, and multilingual learners. Today, I am, wanted to share with you for informational purposes, our ML staffing plan for the upcoming school year. So we are required, um, to provide English language services to students whose first language is not English. And it's based off of this, uh, law that's built into the Civil Rights Act. This was our enrollment last year, or at the end of last year, we ended with 436 multilingual learners. Uh, of those, 29 students exited, uh, receiving, needing to receive services, so they met the requirements to exit out. Uh, of those 436, the students come from 15 different countries, including the United States. And it's based on where they were born. The United States, Guatemala, El Salvador, Ecuador, Venezuela, United Arab Emirates, and Vietnam, among others. They speak 14 languages, including Spanish, Chinese, Russian, Gujarati, Urdu, and Swedish, and English. Some of the students' actual first language was English, but the way they, uh, complete the home language survey, if there are multiple, um, indicators that English is not the primary language, either that they learn first or has spoken to them in their home or is spoken in the home, then we are required to screen the students to see if they're eligible. So that's why English shows up as a first language for some of our English language learners. This is our projected enrollment, so I took all of the students who ended last year as English learners and moved them up one grade. Our kindergarteners are student, the 53 students who are identified as kindergarteners aren't actually identified yet. Those are our 53 students who are in pre-K, who, in their home language survey, they indicated that they met one of those three requirements where we, where we would have screened them. But we don't screen students until they are in kindergarten because as a pre-K student, I'm learning, eh, all languages. So we don't screen the students, um, in pre-K. But this is on the, uh, teacher's radar. They received the list at the end of last year, so they know when they come to school at the end of this month, they know that these are the first students that they need to screen because they are active in our school and we already know that they are, uh, potential English learners. So this is a slight adjustment as from last year. We have nine teachers for our 400 or so, uh, English learners. They, our English learners are in every one of our, uh, every one of our schools. The only two changes, uh, the one ML teacher that is, that is going to service, uh, Centerville Elementary, Kennard Elementary, will also pick up Centerville Middle School. She didn't have that school last year. The reason for that is, let me step back. The way I look at this is breaking down by school and by location of where we are. The teacher who serviced the students at Centerville Middle School last year also was at, uh, Southersville Middle School. And if you look at the number, there are, um, 58 students at Southersville Middle School right now. So to pull her, that teacher out for one day to address the needs of the nine students at Centerville Middle School, it didn't make sense to do that. But to include that instead with the teacher who is already in the area at, uh, Centerville Elementary and at Kennard, and it, I really try to balance the caseload of all of the teachers as well. Uh, the other change is the teacher who will support Mata Peak Middle School, Stevensville Middle School. She's had those two schools for a number of years. We're adding, uh, Mata Peak Elementary School, again, for two reasons. Uh, the teacher who used to service Mata Peak Elementary School also services Bayside and, uh, Kent Island Elementary School. It would have overloaded that teacher, plus it was spreading her through three schools and the number, it really was a challenge for her to meet the needs of the students. So allowing her to work in two schools, uh, keeping her with a caseload equivalent to all of the other, uh, teachers, uh, it will work out pretty well. The way the teacher at, uh, Stevensville and Mata Peak works currently, she's, in the morning, she's at Stevensville and then she's at Mata Peak, so being on the same campus in the afternoon, really is not going to be disruptive, uh, to the, the current schedule that she has. And I think she's going to be able to work out, uh, pretty effectively with the two principals at the Mata Peak campus to meet the needs of those students. Any questions?
I want to just thank Dr. Guido for giving the presentation. This has become a tradition for us to make this presentation in conjunction with the special education staffing plan we did earlier. This is not required to be presented to you. It's not required for you to vote on it, but we feel it's important. Uh, given the nature of the program, we are required to serve the students just to keep the board and the public aware of, of how we're serving the ML students. So thank you for being here tonight.
Do we know what the numbers look like for next year? I mean, I know we're still in the middle of not getting all of our registrations and.
Oh, you mean the overall student enrollment?
Well, it's gonna include this.
He has a.
So I know he has the numbers from last year moving to next year, but we also get students coming in because we've got new.
I would anticipate this number being more than 448,400. But these are, these are the students, and I, I think I pulled this, this number, uh, at the end of July also. So it's already, students who have left, they're already pulled out. So we don't know where, we always receive students.
Right.
So we can anticipate 450, 460.
That's something we could maybe try to go back and do though, Dr. Guido, is look over the last three years, how many we did add that we weren't expecting. I don't, I don't know that I've seen that number, but that's an interesting question and maybe we should try to do that.
We can track that down.
Statistical thing that's intriguing you.
We actually do every, uh, since I've been here, we have started, we have identified anytime a student enrolls, it is a potential English learner. So I can get that information rather quickly to see the number of students that have enrolled and whether they, if they were potential English learners, so, sometimes, not frequently, but sometimes they actually don't meet the requirements to receive ML services. So I can, I can provide that number to you quickly. That'd be great.
That would be great. Thank you. Where are we? There we go. Summer school update.
Evening, board members, Dr. Kibler, Kibler, Dr. Shreckengas, President Bent. My name is Dr. John Demby. I'm the new facilitator of the Eris program.
Congratulations.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay, the purpose here is to just give you an update, um, on the various, uh, instructional and engagement activities that students are offered in Queen Anne's County over summer. Uh, students are involved in different summer programs at all different levels. Uh, the goal is just to make sure we are providing some of those, uh, services that we have to, so to speak. So we have the Title I and Title III elementary school programs. Uh, we have the extended school year program, as well as we have the cred-, high school credit recovery, AKA summer school program. So as you can see here, we, uh, service students in grades pre-K through five. Uh, they attend Churchill, Graysonville, Sellersville, and as well as the middle schools, corresponding middle schools. About approximately 85 students participate would be enrolled in those programs. There's a grade breakdown. Um, I think something being noted, an 80% attendance rate for summertime should be something we wouldn't take for granted. That's a pretty good number there. Uh, also, uh, we, IREDDI came up earlier. IREDDI was being utilized during the summer, uh, to help with reading, uh, as well as other math, uh, applications, supplements, students participating in week extend programs. Uh, instruction was delivered with consumables, hands-on activities, uh, manipatives, as well as computer-based resources. We want to make sure they're not sitting and getting, they're moving around, uh, they're having fun, being active. Breakfast and lunch was provided. Uh, we had some, uh, outside agencies that provided snacks and food bags for students. Uh, we have some kudos to Chop Take Health and Music Therapy, uh, 4H, Queen Anne's County Free Library, University of Maryland Extension Office, uh, for their contributions to our summer programs and the enrollment.
This is the program I referenced earlier in board involvement with Dr. Shreckengas and I serving dinner. We got kicked out of the serving line, but.
Couldn't keep up.
And then extended school year, approximately 187 students, uh, academic and speech services over a four-week period. Uh, those were the services that provided. Ms. Smith kind of alluded to some of those services earlier and how important they are. A small group instruction was delivered at Centerville Middle School, Graysonville Elementary, Sellersville Middle, uh, even transportation services provided. Instead of people having to go to the service, the service came to the people. I think that's very nice as well. I'm just going to say summer school instead of high school, instead, instead of credit recovery. So summer school. Got a 169 students participated over two campuses, Queen Anne's County High School, Kent Island High School. Uh, over 200 plus credits were earned over summer to kind of keep folks on trajectory toward graduation. Uh, and as well as we are, uh, hot and heavy right now, planning the schedules for the new year because summer school ended last week. Now we have some accurate numbers on credits earned over summer, make sure students are properly scheduled. In conclusion, combined with three, all three programs, 550 students were involved in Queen Anne's County Public Schools summer opportunities. Thank you for, to all the staff behind the scenes. Thank you to all of the, uh, outside agencies that made their contributions. And most importantly, thank you to those, uh, schools for hosting, um, those students and their families over the summer. Any questions?
I want, I want to take the opportunity to throw a couple of points in for the board, if that's okay. Um, the, the Title I and Title III elementary program that comes from grant money, um, use, utilizing FY25 dollars. If you're following the news, there was a little bit of a danger of some of the title dollars being held up for FY26. The, uh, the administrate, the federal administration did release those funds. Um, so we are hoping to be able to continue this program next summer for Title I and Title III. The, um, extended school year comes out of special ed funding. The high school credit recovery, this is something that we were utilizing ESAR dollars before this year to fund. We all thought it was important. We want to thank the board for, um, recognizing the importance of this program and approving this in the budget because it did happen in FY26 weeks. So this was FY26 dollars, so that, you can see, um, how that, the impact of the, of that program, which was, I think, $25,000 or $35,000, Mr. Watkins, you can say, but to, to recover over 200 credits by 169 students to keep us, to keep them on track to graduate. You know, we had that 100% graduation rate we like to brag about this spring. So this goes to that. So to see those dollars that you allocated to that, um, it's impressive and I thank you for that.
Thank you very much. Take us home.
Hello again. Rob Watkins, supervisor of finance, President Bent, Dr. Kibler, board members, executive team. I'm here back to discuss, um, our fiscal year 26 budget and provide a short update. This, this, I'm not asking, I'm not asking for anything. There's nothing to veto in this case. Um, Dr. Kibler's, um, theme of being transparent is evident and this, uh, is why I'm here tonight, just to kind of point out a couple of small differences in our budget book. Remember when we came and we got the budget book approved in June? We recognized that we had not, uh, had the state file yet. The state aid file had not been received, so we were still running off of estimates from December. The, um, not long after July or whatever, we got the state file. And the good news is there wasn't any reduction of funds. So the final number in our budget book matched the numbers that came out of the state, the final state aid file. So that is a good thing. However, in, on a couple of the lines, the numbers kind of juggled a little bit. So I just wanted to make you aware of what, what happened and why it happened. So in three categories, compensatory education, special education, and multilingual learning. Uh, the state aid file presented an adjustment, a local share adjustment, which is essentially a shift from state aid mandated local funds to local funds, to maintenance of effort local funds. So in com- compensatory education, we saw a shift of, uh, $1,117,666. Those are the yellow ones that you're looking at on your screen. In special education, we see, we, we saw a shift of $302,852. And in multilingual learners, we saw a shift of $118, uh, $118,421. Essentially, those, those shifts shift out of the yellow and down into the green at the bottom of it. So essentially it becomes, uh, more local autonomy in this, in this budget. The county commissioners provided us the increase and we are, they, they gave us $82,000, $82,729,260. Uh, so we are in good shape there. Just want to make you aware that there was a shift in how the funding came down. One of our points, and I, I pointed this out in the, in the, at the June meeting, but just to kind of remind you. One of our points, and I pointed this out in the, at the June meeting, but just to kind of remind us, there, there's a portion of the pre-K allocation that comes down as a private pre-K allocation. And so the, the most current budget book is going to show ninety-six thousand, one hundred and forty-seven dollars less on the local share. So right now we are looking at two point one four million dollars in that. That is not a reduction of revenue. It is just a shift of revenue from something we would spend to something that the county commissioners will pick up. And we've, we've accounted for that as an expenditure in the budget book. As Dr. Kibler pointed out earlier, through the course of uploading the budget, working on where the budgets, basically analyzing the budget, where the things are being spent and where and what categories and accounts are being spent to, there's going to be opportunities for us to make adjustments to the fiscal year twenty-six budget, to make it as tight as possible, to make it as accurate as possible, and to make sure that, you know, we're monitoring the budget down to the dollar. And that you had that, you can, you have my opinion of it from, with Dr. Kibler's commitment from. So there's nothing to vote on, but we just thought it was a good, a good practice to bring to you some, some subtle changes that are in the budget book.
Much appreciated.
We, we're committed. I'm going to commit to the board tonight. The FY twenty-six budget is going to be a standing agenda item every month and we will have updates for you. People will say what they're saying about me, but we are going to provide information to you, keep you and the public informed of how we're going with the budget. You know, it's really, we're just concluding the first month, so we don't have a lot of data to show you, especially with our ten-month staff not returning yet. Mr. Watkins, I believe, is ahead of most districts in the state in having our budget loaded. He, he keeps reminding me of my push on him for that, but I appreciate everything he's doing. So we can, we can just make sure that every dollar is going where we expect it to, where we want it to, and keep you and the public informed and we're going to do that.
Absolutely.
I'm very appreciative.
I was reading, I'm trying to find it again, I know I read it earlier. We have a program now that we're using for the budget that you've been loading. Is that what I was reading? Because I remember a previous meeting we had, we had such an archaic process with our, with our budgeting and with our...
Yeah, sure. We, so we use e-finance. We did upgrade our e-finance to version twenty-three-ten. That was a fun event in, in the finance world, updating your entire finance system. Yep, so we were, we, we created spreadsheets. We were able to upload the spreadsheets and manage the budget through, through imports and exports.
Instead of typing one line at a time.
Walking desk to desk for signatures?
Yes. There's a twelve thousand lines in our budget overall. There's more than twelve thousand lines of budget code in our budget. So we have to use technology to help us with that.
Yeah, so I, I think we all say we appreciate that update. We appreciate the work you're doing because like I said before, it was just a few months ago when we were talking about how archaic everything was and part of the reason why we've probably had issues in the past. So we, I just personally, and I'm sure the entire board appreciates the updates and you being able to put it on there and actually bring our, bring some technology into our budget process.
Absolutely. I'm glad to hear that because I'm probably bringing in a budget transfer request along in September.
Okay.
A couple of things we need to move around. And it's, it's a good thing, right? So it just means that we're looking at the budget. It wasn't where, what we thought it should be, so we're going to make the right adjustments so that the budget line matches where we're actually trying to spend it. And if we do that right, the previous conversation about the fiscal year twenty-five amendment maybe doesn't happen. In this case, it probably would have because we, we spent a lot more money electricity than we had budgeted for, so we probably needed to cover that anyway. For the most part, we're going to keep trying to monitor this and this monitoring helps us be prepared for fiscal year twenty-seven. Helps us, helps us keep an eye on it and helps us be ready there.
I think there's something to be said for being proactive and not reactive. So I think you guys are doing a great job.
There you go. It was the email, it was the email you sent earlier. That's what, that's what I was reading. I was sitting here looking in the, the board docs, but it was the email you sent earlier saying that you set a goal so we have everything loaded earlier than normal. So that's good, so that's all.
When I asked Mr. Watkins, he said that his colleagues across the state are telling him that October is, is more realistic and we set a little bit loftier goal and he, and he met it. And I appreciate that extremely.
Good, we'll be leaders, set the precedent.
There you go. Followers.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Not a lot of people left. Do you guys have anything you want to say?
I do. I didn't sign, but I do.
Okay. So we're at the next set of public comments. You've got three minutes. Same rules apply as earlier.
Yes, ma'am. Raymond Aaron, managing member of Queen Anne Bus Lines, thank you for approving the contract. I just want to make you aware and transparency, if you want, that my group did not have a chance to look at the contract before it was presented to you tonight. We did the same format that we've had. This will be our fourth contract under this same format, if you will. But there is some language that's different and we didn't have a chance to look at it until we saw it on board docs last night. But we need to send it to our attorney, who also, we're not going to do anything without that person telling us yea or nay. I just want you to be aware. I don't foresee anything. We did see a few things I'd just like clarification on. So I want you to know, I don't know how you're doing it now because for the last three, this will be our fourth one, we normally get it in hand, submit it to the attorney, comments back forth, then we all, one time, you sign, we sign, it's witnessed, then we leave. So this is a little different format than we're used to and that's the only reason I wanted to come tonight, just to part of that. Thank you. I would gladly entertain everyone, questionnaires, if you will. If you want to look at the public-owned bus service versus like Taubia County would do, versus we do, what we do. Twelve million dollars worth of buses, two million dollars worth of contract services to keep and maintenance. I think you get a very good product for the money that you spend. And we follow it pretty much all in this, or at least the audits that come back. I think we're in line with all of them. But I hear you and I, I appreciate you for thinking about how we're doing the best for the county. And I'm a tax, Queen Anne's County resident forever, so.
Yeah, there's nothing against you all, I was just trying to...
Your job, I get it, thank you.
Thank you.
I do have some questions. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next item is budget work session dates and QAC TV conflict. We've been tasked, we have been tasked with filming, oh, sorry. I'm going to read this as is and not skip around. Per George Harvey at QAC TV, we have been tasked with filming and live streaming the Board of Appeals starting this September. The BOA meeting meets the third Wednesday of every month. Only two of your scheduled work sessions conflict with the third Wednesday. It's January twenty-first and June seventeenth of twenty-twenty-six. Would the board consider rescheduling those two work sessions for another Wednesday? Or would you be acceptable if those two work sessions were filmed but not live streamed? We could post the video of the meeting within forty-five minutes when the meeting ends. Comments, questions?
I'd say keep it and just film it later. Don't just schedule.
Because there are work sessions and not live meetings?
Just because instead of having to reschedule the meetings, I, I mean, he can, they're not going to be live streamed, but within forty-five minutes of the meeting ends, it's...
People still get to view it. I think that's the biggest issue is making sure that people have the chance to view it. But the urgency of it being live streamed, I don't really know if it's...
But I tell you, the two meetings it is. So first, the, the board building would still be open, so if people wanted to come and watch it live, they would be able to, assuming we're in the open session part. The January one would be one of our budget work sessions. The June one was one of the work sessions we wanted to keep because usually we have so many staffing changes that allowed us to do...
Because that's the end of the school year.
Yeah, so those were the, those are kind of the topics of what happens at the, I'm sorry, Mr. Dreher.
No, I was just going to get Adam's thought on the legality aspect of being able to just not have it live streamed and things like that. I just wasn't sure if there's any legal ramifications.
It's still live though, right?
They don't even have to air it.
Okay, yeah, I'm just, just asking, make sure we cover everything.
Maybe we can put it on the website that it won't be live streamed, that if they want it in real time, they should just...
Okay, so we'll keep the same dates.
Minutes, which is the requirement. The live stream is a, is like a plus. So we'll still have a QAC TV employee here. I don't know if it'll be ready those days, but maybe, but...
So we'll keep the same meeting, it just won't be live streamed.
It'll be posted immediately after.
Cool.
Can we get a motion for approval because I want to make it official?
I motion that it will be acceptable for the two work sessions to be filmed, not live streamed, and they could post the video within forty-five minutes of the meeting ending.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
And those meetings are still open, the public to be here?
Correct.
So you still can come?
They can show up.
We are not, some state agencies or some public agencies have to live stream. We are not.
One of those, yay. All right, future meetings and events. I would like to add, and I didn't do it earlier and I apologize. There's a meeting with, a meeting that we all, two of us attend on the second Tuesday of the month. Right now, we have one person signed up to do it. I don't want us to get to a half an hour before the meeting and we're all trying to figure out who's going, who's going next Tuesday.
I'm signed up.
I know you're signed up.
I will be out of the country.
Okay.
Same here.
You can have the spot if you'd like it, otherwise I can go.
All right, me and you.
Thank you for the opportunity. I was leaving it for you.
Thank you very much. I would like to try to do that at this meeting.
Okay.
Every month because then it makes it easier for us to make that decision on who's going to be at that meeting the next week.
I like it.
Perfect. And with that said, motion to adjourn. Come on, say it.
We got to announce the next two meeting, the next meeting.
I don't want to announce the next two meetings.
It's the, it's not on it.
September third, twenty-twenty-five.
It's just not on the document.
Yeah, it's not on the document, but it's okay. The next meeting is September third, twenty-twenty-five, six P M. Same bat time, same bat station. Okay, now can I get an adjournment, please?
Make a motion for the Queen Anne's County Board of Education to adjourn tonight's open session at seven thirty-nine P M.
I second that.
All in favor? Aye.